Heard you saying that you wanted something different Like the future's coming and you know it too Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer A different energy that lives inside the air A golden opportunity for those who dare It's a beautiful unknown for us to share Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming It's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
Wish that I was on a holiday A little time in the sunshine and not much to do Just be alone with you Don't even have to try Baby if we stay together, we can catch a break And run away It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday We'll be like we were when we were young Before we had to take responsibility It's you and me Back in our happy place And no one else is around Baby can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday Just for today Leave the world behind A holiday We'll take it one at a time It's alright, it's okay In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday I'm feeling sick There's a gun to my head Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me All the words you said And I'm getting lost inside my head My mind is killing me again The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin 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 I have no control over me There's a ghost inside of me Maybe you can set me free And we can run away And live our fantasies The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Heard you saying that you wanted something different Like the future's coming and you know it too Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer A different energy that lives inside the air A golden opportunity for those who dare It's a beautiful unknown for us to share Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming It's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
Wish that I was on a holiday A little time in the sunshine and not much to do Just be alone with you Don't even have to try Baby if we stay together, we can catch a break And run away It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday We'll be like we were when we were young Before we had to take responsibility It's you and me Back in our happy place And no one else is around Baby can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday Just for today Leave the world behind A holiday We'll take it one at a time It's alright, it's okay In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday I'm feeling sick There's a gun to my head Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me All the words you said And I'm getting lost inside my head My mind is killing me again The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin 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 I have no control over me There's a ghost inside of me Maybe you can set me free And we can run away And live our fantasies The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Heard you saying that you wanted something different Like the future's coming and you know it too Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer A different energy that lives inside the air A golden opportunity for those who dare It's a beautiful unknown for us to share Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming It's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
Wish that I was on a holiday A little time in the sunshine and not much to do Just be alone with you Don't even have to try Baby if we stay together, we can catch a break And run away It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday We'll be like we were when we were young Before we had to take responsibility It's you and me Back in our happy place And no one else is around Baby can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday Just for today Leave the world behind A holiday We'll take it one at a time It's alright, it's okay In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday I'm feeling sick There's a gun to my head Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me All the words you said And I'm getting lost inside my head My mind is killing me again The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin 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 I have no control over me There's a ghost inside of me Maybe you can set me free And we can run away And live our fantasies The room's getting cold And the lights start to flicker And my bones begin to shiver I'm so sick of crying rivers Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Maybe you could be my serotonin Serotonin Heard you saying that you wanted something different Like the future's coming and you know it too Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer A different energy that lives inside the air A golden opportunity for those who dare It's a beautiful unknown for us to share Cause the future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming It's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me The future is coming And it's just you and me
Wish that I was on a holiday A little time in the sunshine and not much to do Just be alone with you Don't even have to try Baby if we stay together, we can catch a break And run away It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday We'll be like we were when we were young Before we had to take responsibility It's you and me Back in our happy place And no one else is around Baby can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday Just for today Leave the world behind A holiday We'll take it one at a time It's alright, it's okay In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday It's alright, it's okay It could happen today Close your eyes, run away In the morning we'll say it's a holiday I'm feeling sick There's a gun to my head Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me All the words you said And I'm getting lost inside my head My mind is killing me again My mind is killing me again. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. 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 I have no control over me. There's a ghost inside of me. And maybe you can set me free and we can run away and live our fantasies. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Heard you saying that you wanted something different. Like the future's coming and you know it too. Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you? Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer. A different energy that lives inside the air. A golden opportunity for those who dare. It's a beautiful unknown for us to share. Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Wish that I was on a holiday. A little time in the sunshine and not much to do. Just be alone with you. Don't even have to try. Baby, if we stay together, we can catch a break and run away. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. We'll be like we were when we were young. Before we had to take responsibility. It's you and me back in our happy place. And no one else is around. Baby, can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. Just for today. Leave the world behind. A holiday. We'll take it one at a time. It's alright. It's okay. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. I'm feeling sick. There's a gun to my head. Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me. All the words you said. And I'm getting lost inside my head. My mind is killing me again. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. 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 I have no control over me. There's a ghost inside of me. And maybe you can set me free and we can run away and live our fantasies. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Heard you saying that you wanted something different. Like the future's coming and you know it too. Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you? Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer. A different energy that lives inside the air. A golden opportunity for those who dare. It's a beautiful unknown for us to share. Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Wish that I was on a holiday. A little time in the sunshine and not much to do. Just be alone with you. Don't even have to try. Baby, if we stay together, we can catch a break and run away. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. We'll be like we were when we were young. Before we had to take responsibility. It's you and me back in our happy place. And no one else is around. Baby, can't you see it's destiny? It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. Just for today. Leave the world behind. A holiday. We'll take it one at a time. It's alright. It's okay. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning we'll say it's a holiday. I'm feeling sick. There's a gun to my head. Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me. All the words you said. And I'm getting lost inside my head. My mind is killing me again. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. 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 I have no control over me. There's a ghost inside of me. And maybe you can set me free and we can run away and live our fantasies. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker and my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Heard you saying that you wanted something different. Like the future's coming and you know it too. Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you? Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer. A different energy that lives inside the air. A golden opportunity for those who dare. It's a beautiful unknown for us to share. Cause the future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. The future is coming and it's just you and me. Wish that I was on a holiday. A little time in the sunshine and not much to do. Just be alone with you. Don't even have to try. Baby, if we stay together, we can catch a break and run away. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. We'll be like we were when we were young. Before we had to take responsibility. It's you and me back in our happy place. And no one else is around, baby, can't you see? It's destiny. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. Just for today. Leave the world behind. A holiday. We'll take it one at a time. It's alright, it's okay. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. I'm feeling sick. There's a gun to my head. Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me. All the words you said. And I'm getting lost inside my head. My mind is killing me again. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker. And my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. 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 I have no control over me. There's a ghost inside of me. Maybe you can set me free. We can run away and live our fantasy. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker. And my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Heard you saying that you wanted something different. Like the future's coming and you know it too. Do you think that you and me could be the difference? While I'm sitting in the silence with you. Cause the future is coming. And it's just you and me. The future is coming. And it's just you and me. Can you feel it all around us? Oh, it's closer. A different energy that lives inside the air. A golden opportunity for those who dare. It's a beautiful unknown for us to share. Cause the future is coming. And it's just you and me. The future is coming. And it's just you and me. Wish that I was on a holiday. A little time in the sunshine and not much to do. Just be alone with you. Don't even have to try. Baby, if we stay together, we can catch a break and run away. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. We'll be like we were when we were young. Before we had to take responsibility. It's you and me back in our happy place. And no one else is around, baby, can't you see? It's destiny. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. Just for today. Leave the world behind. A holiday. We'll take it one at a time. It's alright, it's okay. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. It's alright, it's okay. It could happen today. Close your eyes, run away. In the morning, we'll say it's a holiday. I'm feeling sick. There's a gun to my head. Is it better being alone? Is it better if I was dead? You would never love me. All the words you said. And I'm getting lost inside my head. My mind is killing me again. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker. And my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. 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 I have no control over me. There's a ghost inside of me. Maybe you can set me free. We can run away and live our fantasy. The room's getting cold and the lights start to flicker. And my bones begin to shiver. I'm so sick of crying rivers. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Maybe you could be my serotonin. Serotonin.